It is seven o'clock on February 7th, 2013, and I'd like to call the meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District order. If we can stand, say a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with an introduction of members.
I'm Steve Tringalli from Millville.
Erin Vinoco from Millville.
Brian Faulkner, Millville.
Kathy Robinson, Millville.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Mike Buckley, Blackstone.
Diane Robin, Blackstone.
Kim Shaver-Hood, Superintendent.
The Chair, John Eldridge, is absent today, so I'll be taking over. First on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda, which includes the warrant consent to items A, warrant use of school facilities, field trip requests, and minutes of meeting. Can I be looking for a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Tringalli, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Robinson, all in favor?
Sorry.
Aye. Aye. Opposed. It's a vote, I so declare it. Next, we have public forum, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak under public forum, we do have a second one at the end of the meeting. Having no one wanting to participate in the public forum. Next, we will skip over the report of the student representatives as they're not here. They were taking an early snow day.
Like this meeting.
They're taking an early snow day. Appointments. First appointment, solar energy proposal by the Boys and Girls Club, Mr. Doyle.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with the committee regarding this. I'm here on behalf of the Blackstone Valley Boys and Girls Club as its Chairman of the Board of Directors. We are proposing to develop a solar array facility on our 26 acre parcel that we own off of Menden Street here in the town of Blackstone. Part of that, it's going to be a facility that will be between one and two megawatt facility, as much as two megawatt facility. And we're entering into a purchase power agreement with an entity, a private entity, in order to do that. They reap the benefits of the tax savings by investing into this project, and we reap the benefit of the lease to the land in order to do so. Part and parcel to that, however, is for us to be able to sell the electricity, to market the electricity to that the facility will actually generate. And in doing so, it goes back to the National Grid, however, those people that actually acquire it would be designated based on their need for power, would be able to access that credit from the energy that is generated from the solar array. At a reduced rate than what is being, what you might currently be using. And we're, we'd like to first offer it to municipalities, the municipality of Blackstone and Millville, and in this instance, to the, to the school department for all of its facilities that it, that are under its management and jurisdiction. We feel that in the assessments that we've done, the amount of electricity that we would generate from this facility is fairly close to the amount that the school department generates or needs on an annual basis. And we have a proposal that we'd like to present to you. If you wouldn't mind bringing those around. Mr. Doug Savage is our consultant engineer on this project, and we put together a packet of information that would give you some indication as to what the project is about, what the savings, the potential savings would be to the school department over a 20 to 25 year period, depending on your level of commitment and the amount of electricity that you wish to commit from the facility. Certainly, it would not be advantageous, and we wouldn't suggest that the school department consider all of its electricity through this commitment, because over a 20-year period, advances in electricity and components would certainly could possibly diminish your need for electricity. And so we're suggesting that you might consider making a commitment to reduce electricity for somewhere between 75 and 80 percent of your need. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Savage, who is far more versed in the technical aspects of it, to give you some indication as to what would be, why this would be of value to the school department.
Thank you. One of, one of the pages in the presentation that I handed out deals with a power purchase agreement going out 25 years, and the savings that the regional school districts would realize. And it starts year 2013, and you can see the first year, there's a savings of $1,750. Yes.
It's this chart, Madam Chair. It's a few pages in.
Okay.
Current utility rates are the top.
This might be the same, but just in a different form. I think this is giving me the executive summary, is it on the executive summary?
That's an older one.
An old one, sorry.
It's in the chart looks like.
Yeah, that one. That must be in the new packet. Sorry, we gave them back, and they were new.
Trying to save some trees for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Starts with the year 2013.
Yeah, thank you. And was this at like eight, a percentage of what we use currently, or?
It could be a savings to you in the vicinity, although Doug explained that to you.
It has the annual kilowatt hours, that'd be the one, two, three, four, the fifth column over. 1,752,000, and that, that would be about 92 percent of what your demand is. And I figured out the demand using billings from, from four of the, four of the schools. And.
Excuse me, we said the four schools, so this building, the high school, and how are you counting the other ones? Are you counting JFK and AFM as one, or?
Uh, yeah, let me just get that for you.
Basically, does that include the Millville Elementary School?
Yeah, it was, uh, sorry. There's the regional high school, JFK school, the middle school, and Millville Elementary School.
The JFK Maloney complex, we looked at it as one.
Okay.
You and it.
Good.
And the annual demand for those four, four schools was almost 2 million kilowatt hours, or 1,914,960. So when we were figuring on the chart, where it has the production of 1,752,000, that'd be about 92 percent of what your demand is. And that suggested it doesn't have to be that, that number, as far as under the net metering credit arrangement, it could be something less than that. So you could have an annual kilowatt hour net metering arrangement of, let's say, 1,500,000 kilowatt hours. So that's, that's something that you can look at and make a determination of, you know, some things that might affect that, is if you, if you had some, you know, you changed the lighting, let's say you had older lighting, which isn't the case here, I'm sure, but if you had older lighting and you went to the latest and the greatest, you would reduce your demand by doing that, so you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have the need for as, as much buying as many net metering credits as we're showing here. So the, going to the project savings, if you go out 10 years, you can see that that, that amount really starts to climb, where you're almost near $300,000 savings. And then at the end of 20 years, you're to $910,400. Now, this is a conservative estimate, and we feel very sure that we would be able to hit these numbers. We have, under the power purchase agreement, there's a one cent spread between what we would be selling the electricity for and what the utility would be charging. However, that 12 cents could be upwards of 13 cents, depending on how the demand charges are affected. In that a solar array produces a great deal of their electricity in the afternoon, and that is when your demand charges from the utility might kick in. So if you have the production from the array, it would offset some of those demand charges, so that, so that a projected rate might be closer to 13 cents. But again, we're, we're on a conservative estimate there. If, if it was 13 cents versus the 12 cents, then your savings would, would almost be doubled from what you see in the, in the last column. Then what we would like to offer is, is a curriculum, or help with a curriculum for renewable energy. One of the other members of the, of the team that we put together has a friend that's a school teacher in New Hampshire, and that has developed some curriculums there. So we would be willing to, to work at, at no charge in helping develop a renewable energy curriculum for both middle school, high school. One of the other things we're showing is the screenshot of a data acquisition system. And that has live data on, on the facility, and what, how much electricity is being produced. And then it also, down at the bottom of the screen, would give the, the environmental benefits of having, buying green energy versus buying energy that's coming from a coal burning power plant.
Madam Chair, I think the bottom line is that there can be a savings to the school department, anywhere between eight and up to as much as 15 percent annually, from your current bills, that you, current costs for electricity. And again, that fluctuation depends on peak periods and demand and usage and so on, but it, it certainly, we're in a position to be able to sell it or give credit to you so that your costs are reduced as a result of it. Obviously, there's a benefit to the Boys and Girls Club because of the lease that we receive. We don't receive any funds from this, we receive a lease from the property, based on the amount of electricity that is generated up to two megawatt system. And the Boys and Girls Club will reap the benefit of that lease over the 20-year period that it, that the facility or that the contract is in place. And all of our funds and the lease money goes right into our endowment fund for the perpetration of the, of the facility, of the Boys and Girls Club. We think it's a very good use for the property that we have, and we think it's a, it's a clean use, and certainly beneficial, I think, to the community. We'd like to see it, the energy stay right here within the community, and the benefit of it stay within the community. So we, that's the reason why we thought we would start with the school department, to see if that's something that the committee would be interested in entering into. If so, there is a non-binding, a copy of a non-binding letter of commitment in this packet at the end, to say that if the school department is willing to participate in this, it helps us to be able to put the funding together in order to do this. Again, it's a private entity that's putting it together, but they need to obviously seek commitments from outsources to who would consider it. And again, it's non-binding, if this, if the committee would be willing to enter into it.
Questions from the committee?
What are your project deeds? Do you have a deed?
Oh, to get it, to get this in place, do you have any idea, Doug, what the time scheduled would be for getting this on board?
To have a fully commissioned system, you're, you're looking a year, year and a half.
Yeah.
The first two steps that Dan talked about, you know, site control, and then power, and then a off-taker, or off-takers are the first steps, and then we go back to the financial people and get a commitment from them, put in the application with National Grid. We've, we've checked out things like feeder lines and availability on those feeder lines, and, you know, different caps that are in place with the utility for distributed generation. We feel confident it's a, would be a good program for this area. One of, one of the things was there was, the town was thinking of doing a solar field on, on a landfill. And one of the approaches, or the approach that they were going to be taking was to, to put out a bond for, what was it, $3.5 million or something like that? Four million, that didn't fly. What we're suggesting here, there's, there's no money upfront to, to the school district. When the system is commissioned, and when it's, and when the system starts generating electricity, you won't, you won't see a bill until the first month after, after the system has been commissioned, and it'll be discounted green energy that you'll be realizing from this array. And, you know, again, we, we have some flexibility in there, if, you know, if you wanted to commit to, you, you know what your demand is, that's, that's a given figure, and if you wanted to, you know, commit to 50 percent of that, that demand, or 60 percent, or 90 percent, whatever it would be, you know, on the chart, again, that's, that's about 90 percent of the, of the demand. But what the financial people are looking for is some letter of intent, and then they, they know that the project is, is real, and, you know, if you're talking about a two megawatt project, it's six, six and a half million dollars, so they, they have to have their, their comfort level, that the revenue streams will be there for them. And like Dan had said, there, there's investment tax credits, accelerated depreciation, SRECs, which are renewable energy certificates, and the net metering credits. So there's, you know, there's a lot that goes into this.
Madam Chair, if I may, they, they obviously make, this is an investment for the, for this private entity. We don't, even the Boys and Girls Club will not have to put up a dime for this at all. The permitting, the process would be their investment, their risk. But again, they, they obviously reap the benefit of a, the tax, tax shelters and depreciation shelters that they will receive from, and as Doug indicated, is close to $7 million investment that they will put into this facility for us.
Where, where are the 27 acres that you're?
Boys and Girls Club owns 26 acres of land on Menden Street, behind the Menden Street Cemetery.
Okay.
Down, down to the back, on the backside of the, the lake in there. We acquired that property 10, about 10, 15 years ago, through a grant with the Champlin Foundation. And we've just held on to it all these years, and thought perhaps we might do something with it, but we have never really been able to develop it with anything other resources. And then this opportunity has come along to actually only use about seven of the acres, seven to eight acres too, in order to put this array in place. And it's a, it's a good location for it, because of the orientation to sun, both summer and winter, so it should do fairly well. It's a good opportunity, it's a good, clean project that will generate income for the Boys and Girls Club, and that's really my ultimate goal, is to find funding sources so that I, we can keep this going. It's our 20th anniversary this year, believe it or not.
Congratulations.
I have a couple of questions. Has this been vetted through the town offices, or there's any regulatory requirements, or any licensing, anything you need there?
No, there's no licensing that we would have to do with the town, although the town, our town fathers are very much aware of what we're doing, and they were trying to do the same thing. And, and we tried to do both of what they were doing, as well as our project, there was still room for both, to do both. And certainly, even then, we would, we would, would have come to the school committee to see if the school department wishes, wished to enter into the agreement with us in order to acquire the, the electricity from it. I do know that the town's facility, had they put it together, that they're, they were limited as to how much they could actually generate, and I'm not sure that the school department was actually involved in, in, in that at all. I think that they were going to utilize most of the electricity generated from their own facility for the landfill, future growth in the recycling center, as well as some of the municipal structures. That's why we sat with them and said, then maybe our facility as well would be good to work with you to be able to then provide it for the school department. But we've always been involved with doing a purchase power agreement, because I don't want to be in the electricity business. I don't want to, I don't want to have to deal with the management or the maintenance or, or anything of that nature. I just, this is a good way for us to reap a revenue stream for the Boys and Girls Club over the next 20 years.
And also, as a nonprofit, they can't take advantage of the investment tax credits and the accelerated depreciation, so that.
We wouldn't be able to do that.
Yeah, that's, that's a huge, huge amount.
So in this chart, there's some assumptions here, I just wanted to run through with you. Is, we start with 2013, but that's not going to happen, because it's a year to a year and a half to get the project going after.
It's more, it's more.
Okay, so it's going to be further out. There's an assumption of a 3 percent escalation, and that's based on historical or based on?
It's lower than historical, historical would be five, five to 6 percent, so that's a very conservative figure there.
And you project that forward through the whole table?
Yes.
And then the escalation for, for, from you would be 2 percent?
Yes.
So there's always going to be, there's an assumption of a 1 percent gap there, which makes this look favorable. However, that could change, because the 2 percent is fixed, because that's what you'd agree to.
It is.
The 3 percent is variable, because it all depends on what the utilities are charging.
Correct.
Okay.
You know, if you, if you look back 20, 25 years, I don't think you'd see that it's been reduced, you know, as far as the.
Well, I haven't seen it in my bill, so.
[laughing]
No, I just want to make sure we're clear on, on what the assumptions are that are built into it, so.
And, and again, on the annual kilowatt hours, there's, I ran some numbers, if you were, you know, instead of using, you know, that, that amount, you were using 1,500,000, and you can see that, you know, the project savings would, would be less, of course. But then, you know, it's, it's, gives you some flexibility if you, if you, you know, if you, if you commit to a certain amount, and then there might be some other sources that would, that would come on later on, you know, maybe, maybe you'd like to have that flexibility so that you could commit to a little bit less going into this. But I think, you know, anywhere between 75 percent and 90 percent of, and that, and that's four schools, or how many, how many schools total do we?
Well, it would be five schools, but I think the, the Maloney.
We call it the complex.
It's a complex, it's one structure, but in Millville, so it's, it's four complexes that we're actually dealing with.
Okay.
And you've done this before for that scope, the scope that you're talking about for this project, you've done previously in other municipalities?
Yes, and one, one of the other projects we have going in the western part of the state, that we have an arrangement with another town over, this is, you know, Westbrook Field, and then, and then the next town over is committed to, you know, taking all the electricity. It's a smaller array, it's less than one megawatt, so about half the size of the proposed array here.
And is it the schools that are going to consume the electricity?
Yes.
It is?
Uh huh.
Are you putting in a similar program for curriculum?
Yes.
Okay. And how do you, how do you view that? Is that a course that's going to be taught, and what is that?
Yeah, it would be modeled after the, one of the other members of this, of this team. Clay Mitchell is his name, Clay has got his doctorate and also has passed the law exam, so he, he's a practicing attorney. And he is, he's worked a lot with the University of New Hampshire, and then they have some affiliation with Massachusetts Institute of Technology. And so they would have an outline on, on a curriculum, and then would work with, with you and whomever in developing that, be available so that there were questions on the, on the curriculum. You know, they could, they could call this particular contact person, it would be in New Hampshire, and, you know, develop it that way. And then the data acquisition system, which is something that is, that is put in place so that you can measure how much electricity is being generated by the array, and that's required by the state. Well, then you can, if you have a laptop, or you have a screen, a display screen in the lobby, it could show what, what the array is producing right at that time. And it can also have historical reference going back one week, or one month, one year. And, and also, you know, on that screen would, would talk about the environmental benefits of it. I think the, you know, the children would really enjoy that, the pupils would, would enjoy that, it's, it's in popular in other installations.
Is that what this is? This looks like.
It's similar to this, Madam Chair, if I may, it is similar to this, and I don't know how many of you might have been to the Boys and Girls Club lately, but if you come into the Boys and Girls Club parking lot, the old stone house, the stone building, if you look up on the roof, there's 18,000 kilowatts of electricity being generated on solar panels that we've put on there, it generates about the third of our electricity right now for the club. And we have a, the monitor, we have a website where this is, and the electricity that is monitored, generated from that facility comes up on the screen daily. It tells you how much electricity was generated, how much money was made from that electricity, how much oil was saved in doing so. And it's a pretty good type of educational screen that is available to our, to anyone of the public who has access to that website. And it's, and it's changed and monitored daily as, as the electricity is generated. And so this, a similar program, I think, is what Doug is referring to here.
And this is not unique, I mean, it's something that's been done across the state. California's the leader, and then, you know, the other states, New Jersey, second as far as PV installations, Massachusetts is right up there in the top 10. And then as far as working with the schools, it's, it's very popular, and with municipalities buying green energy, and then buying green energy at a discount. It's, and it's something where photovoltaics are being, you know, they're the, as far as renewable energy, it's, it's being used all over the world. In Japan, I think the number is 50, 50 of their nuclear plants, power plants are going to be taken offline, are going to be replaced with wind energy and with solar installations. Germany, almost all the installations now are going on roofs, because so much of the, of the land has been used for PV arrays. It's, Germany's the leader as far as installations worldwide, so this is something that is not new, it's something that's been in place and is working, and has benefits, you know, not only for the Boys and Girls Club, but for the school system, and again, being able to get green electricity at, at a discount.
Any more questions by the committee?
Just one, what would our commitment be? Would it be a year-to-year kind of commitment, or are we signing on for a period of time?
A period of time, 20 years.
20-year commitment.
And I'm looking at the annual savings on, on this chart, year 2033, there's a huge jump on the annual savings. What happens on that year, 20 years out?
After 20 years, it jumps a bit.
It goes from 79,000 to 343 in a year.
Yeah, I.
We want that savings right up front.
If we took those five years and front loaded them, I think we'd all be ready to sign up now.
What is that? One of the other members of the, of the team put.
What is that?
One of the other members of the team put this together, and I'm not quite sure why there is that dramatic jump there, but that is sizable.
Yeah, because on the executive summary, I mean, the numbers aren't the same, but it doesn't jump up dramatically, I doubt.
Yeah, I'll have to check that and get back to you on that.
Any other questions from the committee?
Well, just that, you said there's a non-binding. The letter of intent is non-binding?
It is.
But the purchase agreement would be binding?
Would be binding, yes.
And what's the timeframe that you're looking for for the, the non-binding, I guess?
Well, the sooner we could get that from the school department, the sooner that we can start our process that we need to start. It would be very helpful if you would give some consideration over the next 30 days to consider it.
There is a date of March 1st in here.
Yeah, I saw that somewhere.
Yeah, one of the things we run into is those feeder lines and the availability on the feeder lines, and that there's a cap on the amount of distributed generation that you can put on a feeder line. And there's other projects that are being considered within, you know, the geographic area that feeder line crosses. And so there's the possibility that, you know, somebody else could come in with a project, a two-megawatt project, and then it would, you know, there's a cap of three megawatts on the feeder line. So, you know, that's, time is of the essence.
Okay. Well, we will take this under advisement and have Mrs. Shaverhood get back to you.
Very good. Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, Mr. Dudak.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Shovel ready, Mike? Have you shovel with you?
My plow's outside.
Okay, that's good. Because I sure read that. The first-year principal has to lead the charge in the snow removal.
Yeah.
That's what I hear.
Let me turn this.
Everyone see that? Yeah.
Says no signal.
I hope that's not...
Could be mine.
Okay, all right. So, good evening. Thanks for having me here. I'd like to first start with sharing the MCAS results of the high school. I think at the last meeting, or one of those meetings that I was at here, I did mention schooldigger.com. I just wanted to show you this because I thought it was, it's a pretty nice resource for me when I'm looking at test scores, analyzing test scores. But when you look at Blackstone Millville, you head down, these are MCAS test scores for Blackstone Millville, 10th grade, ELA, and it's starting in 2003. The red is actually the school. The green is district, and the state is the blue. And as you can see throughout 2003 to current, we've been ahead with the state since that time, which I think is a nice thing. And then if you're looking at just the raw data, you could see how proficient we are in comparison to the state. So we're above in the ELA portion. And again, that was just a schooldigger.com. Just wanted to share, because I do have some data from a security portal as well, but this is just a nice big picture. This is math. In 2003, we were below the state average, and it seems as though we've increased that. It looks like in 2010, we were below that at one point, and 2012, we're again above the state average. And again, this is a proficiency, so this is advanced and proficient. This isn't looking at these improvements in warning. So that was that. And you could also see, you can do a comparison with the region, with different schools. And let me just share quickly our biology, and this started in 2007. So you can kind of see where we are with that. And once again, our proficiency from a school standpoint to state. So we were 87% proficient in 2012 in comparison to 72, which I think is a, which is a pretty nice number to see. So when we're looking, again, this is just a screenshot. This is our English. This is our advanced proficient, needs improvement, and warning failing. I like to look at first the positive. With ELA, we didn't have anyone fail, so there was no one on failing or warning for 2012. And when we look at our advanced and proficient rate, both of those are at 47%, which was an increase in 2011, and so on. So when I look at the MCAS scores in ELA, that's probably, I would say that is our strength. Could we improve? Again, I'd be the first one to say we could always improve, but I'm pretty happy with those results, especially seeing the needs improvement and warning on that lower end. And no one will have to take the retests with our juniors, our juniors, or our current sophomores at this time. Looking, this is another great chart. For me, it's a big picture because I think there's a lot of different things that you can go and look at when you look at the security portal. This, to me, was a big-picture piece in terms of looking at specific types of questions, strands, and topics. And you could see in terms of the possible points in that first column, school percentage, corrects, district, state. The big one is looking at the school-state difference. You could see that we are above the school or the state with the exception of, at the bottom, when we're looking at myth, nonfiction, or poetry style and language. So it's that reading and literature piece. That's specifically where we'll be looking at to increase our MCAS and ELA, and that's something that I will address further on in the presentation. Looking at our math, I'm looking at 2009 in terms of our proficient and advanced. We were at 81%, and then it went down in 2010 to 73. 2011, 83, and 2012, we went to 84. Looking at state in 2012, we are below in terms of the advanced level. We scored at 44%. The state was at 50. That's a discussion that Mr. O. and I are having in terms of how do we increase those students that are proficient into the advanced? You know, a lot of times, you look at how do we increase warning or needs improvement students to become proficient, but I think we could probably increase our proficient to the advanced level. We do have some work with math. When you look at this chart in terms of possible points and the school-state difference, you see a lot of red in there, and those are items that we're specifically looking at. A lot of it to do with number sense, operations, the shapes and patterns. And we did have three students currently that failed the MCAS, so they will have to take the retest. So that's just a comparison between ELA. And finally, when we're looking at science, we had a big jump in the last two years in proficiency in terms of 64% and 65%. There was something that, you know, in 2009 and 10, 29% and 39% in terms of the advanced level. I would like to increase that proficiency rate to advanced with those numbers of students that are doing that, but we are well above the average in proficiency from 65% here at BMR to the 46% that the state currently has. We hadn't, no student who took the biology MCAS failed that. So it's, looking at overall numbers, we're looking at three specific students in the MCAS math that needs to retake. They're at high risk in terms of failing that, moving on and graduating, so we are working with those students specifically. But I will talk about that as well. Again, this is our, just another graph in terms of the school-state difference, which I liked to look at specifically. We will be looking at open responses for science and also looking at the anatomy and physiology and cell biology, which we scored the lowest in in terms of the school-state difference, but we still were positive in that. So I thought that was pretty nice to look at. So before I get into the specific improvement plan or the MCAS improvement plan, I'd like to briefly describe what I feel is our school, school goal, district goal, to raise achievement. Again, I think we really need to target a big-picture item, and I think as a district, all the administrators, all the principals are on board of looking at something specific. And I think the biggest piece that we need to look at is rigor. How do we raise rigor, higher standards, and so forth? This graph, to me, again, this is from 24/7 Classroom. It's a project that was done in 2004. This is direct observation of 1,500 students, K-12 classrooms. Again, take it for what it is. But what is happening in the average classroom? 4% evidence of clear learning goals and objectives. 52% of students are doing worksheets. Lecture, there's 31% of classrooms that are doing purely lecture. Fewer than half the students are engaged, 82%. Fewer than half. That, to me, is appalling. And looking at bell-to-bell learning is less than 1%. Can I say that we are an average classroom at BMR? I can't say that, but are we, is every single classroom looking at active project-based learning, inquiry-based learning? All students are engaged completely. Bell-to-bell work is at 100%. That's not the case. So when I look at what we need to do specifically, and looking at just this in the average classroom and having discussions with our principals, we can look at this and say, you know what, there are probably some classrooms that are similar to something like this chart, and we need to improve our academic rigor, because I feel if we follow a process of increasing rigor, we will increase our MCAS scores. Now, if you look at this definition of rigor, because I feel that we need a definition, and again, this is from Barbara Blackburn. This is an article that she was writing. But her fundamental core beliefs about rigor is that rigor is quality, not quantity. Rigor is for everybody, and rigor is about learning, not punishment. And looking at that definition, which I feel from a district standpoint, we need to create and stand by, and I think this is a pretty good definition. Rigor is creating an environment in which each student is expected to learn at high levels. Each student is supported, so he or she can learn at high levels, and each student demonstrates learning at high levels. I think that's just a great definition, and this is our hope. How do we increase the level of rigor? We need to have higher expectations, support each student to learn at those higher levels, and ensure that students demonstrate that they are learning at high levels. So looking at this acronym, ways to increase rigor. R, raise the level of content. I, increase complexity. G, give appropriate support and guidance. O, open your focus. And R, raise expectations. I think this is a nice acronym in terms of defining and looking at how are we going to increase the level of rigor, or even recognizing that. I think a lot of teachers don't know what a rigorous classroom looks like. What, students may not know what a rigorous classroom looks like. So that is something that I think that we really need to look at. Now, looking at some specific strategies, and again, I don't want to take this as my main presentation, but again, this is from the researcher, Barbara, I forget the last name. But looking at the first way to increase rigor, raise the level of content. What does that mean? We're looking at valuing depth, increasing text difficulty, creating connections, review, not repeating, and evaluating content. And you'll see my improvement plan. This is something that I've incorporated with our teachers. We have discussions over this, and this is a way to be able to do that. Now, looking at increasing complexity, what do we mean by that? We're looking at the complexity in the writing, complexity with vocabulary. Are we just asking students to repeat a definition of a word, or are we asking them to use it in certain contexts? So that is a part of increasing complexity. Giving appropriate support and guidance. Are we modeling best practices? Are we showing our students, excuse me, what ideal exemplars look like? How do we look at research papers and big tasks with projects? Are we chunking big tasks, or are we having a systematic approach on how students are able to approach some of those big problems? Include more open-ended tasks and questions. Open-ended questions, open-ended vocabulary instruction. And I'll show you what our English teachers are doing to create more open-ended questions, which will help prepare for the MCAS as well. And then finally, raising expectations. We shouldn't create a culture where learning isn't an option. We need to expand or expect the best, and raising expectations is a way for us to be able to increase rigor in the classroom. So from a step-by-step analysis, this is something that I would like to explore in terms of this being a focus for this year, or for the spring, or for next year, in terms of how do we increase rigor. We need to define what rigor is, and I think we have a good, a pretty good definition of that. We have an acronym for it, and I feel that if students know what rigor is, if teachers know what rigor is, and if there's proper professional development, we will be able to increase that academic achievement. Measures of rigor. Looking at assessments. What do our assessments look like? And a lot of our teachers are looking at common assessments. How do they measure student progress? Are they effective? Do they compare to the MCAS? Student behaviors. What does rigor look like from a student's standpoint and their behavior? Teacher behaviors. Recognizing and supporting rigorous instruction. I think from an administrative standpoint, I should be able to recognize that and support that with teachers and having teachers be able to share. And finally, creating a culture of rigor. So when we look at the big picture, and if you ask me what I would like to focus in on, I think it's vital that we improve and have teachers, students, parents, community recognize what rigor and high rigor looks like. Now, you may ask, what does rigor look like in the classroom? I thought this was a nice little slide. ELA and math specifically, we're looking at college readiness standards, primary sources, academic vocabulary. I think a big one is evidence-based conversation. Modeling, application to real world, influency, conceptual understanding. Those are some big pieces in terms of how can we recognize that. Authentic engagement. I always explore, I always speak with or talk with people about or discuss what is passive instruction versus active instruction. I think you need both in the classroom, but I think active instruction, to me, is more authentic learning. I think we learn more when we can teach. So if students are teaching a subject in the class, they're learning a lot more than repeating something. So when we look at strategies, for me, I think project-based learning is really important. I think inquiry, projects, student-centered discussion, and hands-on experiences are vital. I think inquiry, projects, student-centered discussion and hands-on experiences are vital. So that's what I think rigor would look like. Now, exploring specifically my MCAS improvement plan, I apologize. I know it looks, looks tiny. Hopefully you could read some of this. But this is with my English department. We wanted to look at student performance on open response questions, specifically the nonfiction and poetry. So our teachers, when I ask teachers what instructional changes would happen and would occur, and I'm hoping you're seeing that there's a theme behind the rigor and what's happening with MCAS and our improvement plan. So examples, provide students with anchor examples. They need to see what exemplars look like. If they have nothing to compare to, they're doing what the teacher is asking them to do. And if there's no exemplar work, they don't know what that looks like. So they may get average work. Practice questions, practice writing. So there's additional practice writing with special focus on nonfiction and poetry. There's an additional, what I learned, that they did add an additional nonfiction and poetry section into the curriculum. So that, that was increased. Ninth graders, when we look at exams, and I'll show you an exam that they, that they've created, multiple choice questions will continue to evolve into MCAS-style questions. So you're no longer getting that question of, well, I'll show you an example of that. That Turnitin software that we're piloting right now, it helps, well, it will help with our peer editing and having teachers be able to have individual conferencing with, with students. How will we know that students are making progress? During our PLC times, so these are monthly periods and our weekly meetings that all of our teachers have, they're looking at multiple choice questions. So they're analyzing how the students did. And then they also have monthly MCAS study sessions, which will allow students or teachers to really identify what are students struggling with in terms of those questions. They're looking at the common assessments, exploring them and really identifying what the weaknesses are with those particular students. Now, if they're still struggling, luckily, I did realize, or I didn't realize this, but I did find out from our guidance department that we, we do have a grant that we've had for quite some time. And we identify students that are on warning or are failing. And they actually take a, there, it's an outside tutorial, MCAS tutorial in ELA, in math and in science. So we're actually starting with ELA soon. It's a six-week program where we hired a, an outside tutor who's a retired BMR teacher, specifically working with a lot of the weak areas that these students have. So that's happening pretty soon. So they're actually being pulled out of study halls to work on this. Hopefully, most of those students do take that opportunity to be part of that class. They do have the option of opting out if parents want them to. Because I can't force them to currently, but I.
Is that something the parent, is that something the parents sign off on?
Yes, they do. I would love for them to be almost mandated into taking that. But apparently there is a sign-off and I can't force them to do it, so.
When is that starting?
I can't tell you what the date is, but I know ELA is coming up.
And when is the ELA for tenth grade, MCAS? When is that? Is that March?
I believe it's March, yeah. So we're, so we're preparing these students. And a lot of these students are coming from the eighth grade. So we're analyzing their, their MCAS eighth grade scores. So we know that they're weak in certain ELA standards. So we're trying to prepare them when they're, when they're taking their ELA in March for the sophomores.
And it's a six-week program?
It's a six-week program.
So it should be starting like?
Probably.
Like yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's towards the end of March, I know.
They could be. I asked Maureen Tesier, I said, what are we doing with, with our students that are on warning or have failed? And I know we've posted for, for those positions. And it could be happening right now. I guess mathematically it should be, yeah. So that, that is the English. Now, looking at the specific MCAS for math, there's a lot in math that we, we really need to work on, that I thought we needed to do. But again, we're looking at strengthening opening responses and multiple choice answers as it relates to data collection and graphing. During one of our PD days, teachers and students will be sharing real data that they've, that they've been receiving. And they're going to be discussing, organizing, graphing and interpreting that data. And the data that they're receiving currently, so there's a project that they're working on cross-curriculars. It's the PE department and the math department. So our PE students are gathering data on body mass index. They're, they're looking at how many jumping jacks and sit-ups they can do. And they're, they're analyzing that data in their math classes, specifically looking at box and whisker charts, which I don't really, I'm not too familiar with. But apparently that's something that they can go and use. There's an overlap with vocab. So they'll be using vocabulary in different departments specifically related to math. Vernier-technology probes are going to be utilized more. I know in the, in our budget, I did look for Vernier probes to be able to gather and analyze data more effectively. And just even exploring and observing a lot of our math classes, the vocabulary that they're using isn't on a vocabulary quiz. They're using it in class, in the classroom when they're discussing. So when they're analyzing problems, a lot of our teachers are forcing them to be able to use proper vocabulary to describe what they're seeing or what they're writing on the board. So it's, so it's not just, you know, I'm solving for x and I'm going to take this number and put it to the right. They're actually using math-related vocabulary there.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
It says on the right side under teacher, it says, students who scored two thirty-eight or below on MCAS eighth grade will be provided with five weeks of pull-out instruction.
Sure, yep.
Is that happening right now?
No. That is, so the ELA section is first for the tutorial. Right after ELA is math. And then we go into our science. Because I believe science is our last MCAS. So I think that's happening today.
But that'll be within the grant and that'll be after?
Correct. And you have, I mean, several students that are failing or on warning in ELA are failing the math section as well. So we couldn't overlap that. We're, we're looking at, so right after the ELA section, which I believe that was six weeks. The math is five. I don't know how, why that time period, but I guess we're, we're looking to squeeze it in before, before the sections. Is that it? Yes, yeah. Okay, sorry. And so formulating test questions. So we're continually looking at our common assessments and looking at how are we using MCAS-style questions within our common assessments? Because I think the biggest piece with some of our courses, especially in math, when they're looking at the open responses, is how familiar students are with the test format, with MCAS test format. So they're not, or they weren't completely familiar with the wording. Even looking at percentages, some people know it, you know, if we're looking at fifty percent, it might be written out as fifty percent. It might be written out as a fraction. It might be written out as three out of six students in class. Just having that sort of verbiage on a lot of exams have been analyzed. So they're, they're looking to adapt and evolve those questions that they have on common assessments. And one of the biggest things that they're looking at right now is with that data that they're collecting. So they're, they're using real-worlds data that they can use. Hopefully it's motivating them. It's not just random numbers that they're seeing. They're, they're looking to create a graph, analyze that and actually have some sort of project at the end that they're displaying that out in the hallways. So that real student work will be out there for them to be able to look at. And again, similar to the ELA, MCAS students that, that don't score. And again, I don't know what it is with, with ELA, if it's two thirty-eight as well. But Mrs. Tesier runs that program for me. They will be.
I'm thinking it's needs improvement and warning.
It's most likely needs improvement and warning, correct.
Do you have the percent, I know that it was probably in one of your previous slides. Do you have the percentage of students who are in the needs improvement and warning for ELA? I know you had it in one of them. I'm just thinking of how many students we're actually talking about. Because I know it's.
So in ELA?
Very high.
I think it's like five or eight, something like that. Might even be less than that.
Anyhow, it was, I think it was the bar graph. There it is.
So we're looking at fourteen percent.
And, but that would, would that include the two percent too?
Definitely, yeah. So we're, we're looking at roughly sixteen percent.
And are these regular ed students or are these a combination of?
I believe they're a combination of regular and special.
Is that, that's ELA? Do you have that?
So this was, this is math.
Okay.
And ELA. Is that five percent?
Okay. Well, that's.
I mean, we do have some students that did not pass and they're, they're juniors. So I would say that most likely they would be in that, that pullout as well, if the schedule allows them to be able to do that. I think part of the opt-out with parents is that they're being asked to leave a specific math course to go into a math, MCAS enrichment tutorial. So I think that's part of why that pullout is, the waiver is there for them.
It's not a study hall, it's, it's.
I think most of them are study halls, but I think some schedules just. Yeah, because we have one tutor.
Is it the same tutor for ELA and math?
No, there, so we have three separate tutors.
That's going to be a challenge to try and justify the student coming out of a math class to. If they're going to miss him. Yeah, they could be missing the reg, regular, they'd fall behind in the regular classroom, so.
Definitely.
I can understand the concern. I don't, I don't know how else you package it though. It's, it is what it is.
It's difficult. I think at one point, this was happening at the end of the day at two oh five. But again, now we're looking at how do we transport students home at three o'clock or two forty-five? I believe at some point that was, it was an after-school.
I just want to make sure the district is providing what's on the improvement plan. And I think that was my point on when it's happening and do we have, do we have the setup and in place for those students who are struggling?
Two years ago and prior, it was run after-school and there was an after-school bus. However, a large percentage of the grant was taken up in transportation. And so last year it was looked at to reconfigure. And that's why it was put in the school day because more of the money went toward the actual instruction instead of transporting kids back and forth.
That makes sense if it's, if it's a study hall, not necessarily a math. But if it's a study hall, why not implement it during the day? You'd have more people wanting or using that versus not.
I think we try to accommodate as many students from a study hall. Can I say that we're pulling all students from study hall? I don't think it's possible to be able to do that. But I, I mean, that's our hope, to be able to do that. So again, that's math and being able to identify. The biggest piece that math examined was that the students just were not familiar with the verbiage, maybe the terminology. So they are working on the open responses and what that looks like. So again, samples of student work will be, will be examined, actually specifically looked at why that student didn't do well on that, that specific question. Is it, we didn't cover the material? Was it just because of, they just didn't understand what the question meant? And they, they sort of just passed it or just randomly chose an answer? Those were specifics that, that they discussed. And finally, when we looked at our science, again, we passed, we were above average with the state. But I did ask Ellie Conrad, our department head, to, to really examine certain aspects. And she really wanted to look at open response answers. She felt that there is a difference between open response in ELA and open response biology. And I think when we're looking at biology and science, we need to have something that's more clear, concise and to the point. In ELA, it's a little different. And we're, we're looking at five paragraph essays. We're looking at certain things. So right now, what we're actually looking to do is have one of our science teachers go to a training that's developed through MSSAA on ELA and science teachers and looking at how to appropriately respond to open responses questions. So that's going to be happening, I'm hoping, if I can get a teacher and I have approval to have that happen. But one of the biggest things that they wanted to look at was the open response and teach students to, one, read and analyze questions. Two, break questions into steps. Three, locate and organize appropriate information. And again, direct responses to meet requirements of the question. They felt that they just did not understand how to break down a specific question and just answer whatever they could. They would look at a question, not understand the terminology, not be able to break it down and analyze what the question was specifically asking. And they weren't doing very well on that. So what they're, what they're looking to do is now compare and assess, compare those assessments and create a general rubric when it comes to open responses. And that would be incorporated within their labs and any common assessments that they're doing. Again, there will be that tutorial for biology for those students. They also wanted to look at stressing vocabulary. I think vocabulary usage is important. And when we're looking at rigor, we're not looking at, okay, here's a vocabulary quiz. Let's see if you can go and match column A to column B. We're looking to use science terminology within a lecture, within a discussion and be a little more specific in what they're, what they're asking. And again, familiarity. My hope is that, I believe this has been an ongoing procedure, but we're looking at having common assessments within all classes that are, that have MCAS-style questions in them. So that when students are taking MCAS, they're more familiar with the verbiage, what they're asking and how they're utilizing that. Now, I don't know if you could see this, but this is just an example. I just took a picture of, this was an English, ninth-grade English test on Romeo and Juliet. So if you look at sort of the first, the number five, use the following quote for the next two questions. So they're reading the quote and it's not identifying, they're looking at what's the best meaning of the word. And then the number six, best meaning of the word in the same quote for, for the previous question. So this to me is a better formulated, higher-level, multiple-choice question than trying to identify joy or Joyce. Please define Joyce or what that looks like. So they're, they're looking at that from that MCAS point. This is another page. So one of the themes of Romeo and Juliet is importance of acting with caution and reason. Which one of the following lines from the drama best demonstrates this theme? So for me, when I look at this, this is more of a higher-level, multiple-choice question than it is just to depict or identify. And again, they bolded best because this is something that they, that they see in a lot of MCAS. And a lot of people get confused with what they're looking at. Most likely best.
Least.
Least, yeah, exactly, exactly.
They're looking for application now versus right there.
Exactly. So that was something that, I believe they, they took this test last week. And Mr. Campo Piano provided this for me and I felt, why, why not show you that in there? Now, so the action plan that, that I'm looking at in terms of what we've implemented so far. So we have an improvement plan where we're looking at specific weaknesses at each grade level. We're looking at instructional changes. We're trying to, we're looking at measuring the progress. And this is happening in the PLC time and in the weekly meetings that our teachers have. And I'm asking them to really reflect and analyze student work so that we have data to really support what we're doing. Data analysis at staff meetings and PD at faculty meetings, we're looking at MCAS. The Turnitin software right now is being piloted for peer review and individual conferencing. And again, MCAS tutoring, the outside instruction for students at risk. And again, MCAS tutoring, uh, the outside instruction for students at risk, um, will be happening, or if not, uh, they could be currently happening in ELA.
Do you let us know?
I will.
Thank you.
Sure, I will. In terms of next steps, um, you'll see in red, I, I, that to me is, is, is vital. I, I feel that as a district, as a school, I, I feel that if we could recognize rigor and have some sort of P, uh, professional development in looking at l- raising the level of teaching and learning in all classrooms, we'll be able to meet our, our MCAS improvement plan, and we'll be able to raise, uh, our MCAS scores. But next steps, I'd like to embed ELA vocab, math and science skills in all areas of curricula. We're, we are doing that with our math, um, currently, uh, but increasing exposure to MCAS-style questions. That's happening in a lot of the common assessments that, that, that we're seeing. Home-school collaboration by sending, um, home practice packets. I feel that if I can come up with some sort of packet or an informational packet for all freshmen when they're coming in and explaining and expressing why MCAS is so important, that it's a high-stakes test, um, they need to pass. They, they can't take it as, uh, take it lightly. Um, that's something that I'd, I'd like to, um, look at as well. Rubrics. What do our rubrics look like when, um, students are, um, they're assigned a paper, a research paper, a project? Rubric analysis by teachers to have something that's more consistent, more rigorous, um, more open-ended, I think is, is vital in there. And accountability and measuring progress, we're, we're con- constantly reviewing our MCAS, and we're looking at formative and some, some of the common assessments throughout the year with our, with our teachers. So looking at, um, recognizing rigor in MCAS, and again, uh, uh, my focus right now, I think that's my big picture is, uh, the focus on rigor, what will it do? It's going to raise the level of content, um, for our students. It's going to increase the complexity of our assignments. Are we just assigning homework just to have a grade, or are we assigning homework because it's vital in, in what they're learning? Uh, we, we need to provide support to students to do more challenging work. I think a lot of students will go into class, they sit there, they're bored, um, that's when we have classroom management issues. So how challenged are they? Um, opportunities to give students open-ended, um, open-ended tasks. I think it's difficult when you look at the curriculum and, and what you need to get through and the MCAS years and, and math, you want to make sure that, that everyone's passing. But I think it's, it's important for students to have that open-ended, uh, piece. And then we need to raise expectations. We can't be, um, happy with average. I think we need to do more. And I think with rigor, um, that would happen. An idea that I know, uh, one of the administrators, uh, brought up at one of the meetings is this book, um, by Barbara Blackburn. Rigor, it's not a four-letter word. A possible idea is to, um, have some sort of PD on rigor, but also having, if there's available funds, to possibly purchase, um, this book for all of our teachers and use that in faculty meetings or future PD. Uh, but again, that's an idea. I don't know where that will go, but for me, um, I, I think it's vital if, if, if we could raise the rigor in our classrooms, we're going to be able to raise the, the academic achievement of our students and, and in turn, raise our MCAS scores. So that was. That, that's my plan.
Questions from the committee? Um, I didn't know if you had any, uh, any of the PD days, um, or do you carve out any time for vertical alignment between the middle school into the high school and kind of seeing where those kids are coming from and.
It's a, it's a great question. Uh, I know that's something that we've discussed, so Justin and I have, have talked about. Do we need to do vertical aligning? Uh, yes, we do. Has it happened in the past? It probably has, but it hasn't with me yet, and, um, I, I think that's something, it's a yearly thing. I, I think curriculum is evolving, it's adapting, and we need to all be on the same page. And that's a big thing. Um, when we collaborate, we're filling in the gaps that, uh, that may be out there. And, um, we're reviewing and not repeating, and that's, I think, is a big point as well. How much do we repeat from year to year, rather than review and move on to current? So that, that is, um, something that we're looking to, to do shortly.
Can you just talk about what's the, um, the connection or the difference between rigor and say, grades and grading? Because just the most superficial level, you look at the, uh, middle school honors and high honors, and it seems like it's sixty percent of the kids. Then you look at high school and it probably drops to ten percent. It's the same kids, you know, one year to the next. How do, how do grades and achievement relate to rigor?
Well, I, I think well, part of the, the grades, we're looking at the level or the complexity of what the assessment is. I mean, a lot of teachers may look at grading and, and say, at the end of a quarter, we need to get a specific number of grades in. So you, they'll have a quiz, or they'll have a, a test or a presentation of some sort. I think when you look at rigor, we're trying to create, uh, proper assessments that really measure what the students should be learning. And, and use that as a high-level rubric. What was the other? I'm sorry, there was.
I just, you know, just to me, it seems that, um, you know, and I'm not saying there's grade inflation, but it seems like there's a major disparity, again, the vertical alignment between the hi- high school and middle school.
I, I'm seeing that, uh, you know, a lot of our freshmen are, that were AB students in the middle school. May not be AB students in the high school. I think part of that is the, the whole transition and looking at the responsibilities that they have. That's a discussion that we need to have. Um, I, I mean, you, you see that typically, but I'd rather have freshmen not really dig themselves in, into that deep of a hole to be able to get out. When we look at our honor roll, uh, percentage, our freshmen were, um, the least of, of any class. And I think part of that is just that transition, um, focusing in, organization, looking at that level of assessments that are happening. Again, I can't say anything about the middle school or the high school that, I can't say that the, our assessments are more rigorous in the high school versus middle school, but I think there's just a different. I, I guess, I mean, to be honest with you, I don't, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, I don't know either.
I know, so, I'll be honest. Um, but I think part of that is a transition piece. Moving in, um, to the high school, I, I think there's a lot of hustle and bustle. I, I, I think there's a lot of activity going on. And you see a lot of freshmen that are overwhelmed by trying to get to one other building to the next. They have five, six, seven different teachers. They're all trying to do something a little different. Having a program, um, to discuss rigor, I'm hoping that there may be a little more, um, consistency in, in what teachers are expecting. Because that, i- it's probably different. I mean, getting an A and with one teacher versus another is probably, I mean, it looks different. And you see that everywhere.
Have you looked into, um, you just mentioned possibly getting a book for every teacher?
Mm-hmm.
Have you looked into pricing or?
I, I believe somebody looked at Amazon today. I, honestly, I don't know what the price was. But I, I.
I'm just saying, another avenue maybe, if you could look into it as if it's something, because I know a lot of the teachers have iPads, if it's something that could be bought and then shared digitally, might be a better. A costing or for.
Mm-hmm, that definitely could be.
I know on the NOOK you can borrow each other's. I don't, I'm not really up to speed with me. I could have on that. There has to be something.
I just feel that if we could provide faculty members, staff members with resources that is data-driven, it, it would help, um, with that. I, I think it's a great idea if, I, I think all of us have mentioned at some point, well, let's look at the online resource, the NOOK or, or any, anything else. I don't know if it's out there.
It's twenty dollars.
It's twenty dollars, okay.
Ten dollar difference. But no, for the ebook.
Off the ebook.
So can it be shared?
You have to probably share the tablet.
I like the fact that there's rigor, because if you're trying to raise from proficient to advanced, it's harder to do that than to raise from needs improvement to proficient. So to raise the rigor is, is a good goal. Just because it's harder to raise that bar from proficient to advanced and advanced to advanced is very difficult too, so.
I, I think I'm, I'm setting all of us up for a, a high bar to achieve, and, and I feel that we need that. But I agree with you. I, I think a lot of us will focus in on, on our lower achieving students and say, okay, how are we going to raise students that are on warning or needs improvement to proficient? But my question too is, what are we going to do to raise proficient to advanced? Because there are numbers, if you're looking at biology, plenty of them, I, I think it was sixty-five percent are proficient. Well, what's the next step? We shouldn't be happy and content with that. So I, I completely agree with you, um, with that. Again, this is just a resource in terms of, uh, looking at rigor. You know, we can go look at, um, positive school culture, we can look at community involvement within the schools, but I feel that, um, as a whole, I think the academic achievement, raising that bar, and specifically looking at rigor and something similar to this with this program and educating our, our, our teachers, I, I think would be a benefit.
Questions?
Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I do get a kickback if we, if we buy a few books from the author, so.
Okay, yeah, that's good to know.
Nothing like transparency.
You gotta be honest.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Again, if you could just let us know about the, uh, MCAS, when it's starting and, uh.
The tutorial, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, if it's on our improvement plan, I think it's important to get it moving.
And just some feedback on the presentation. I liked the charts, I liked the graphs. It brought it quickly to our attention. But then the last ones were a little tough for the Millvilleans to read, so.
The, uh.
It'd be our learning gap on the side of the table.
That easy over this study.
I mean, I should have provided the, I mean, these are, the, these are the improvement plan-specific ones that, um, we, we were able to fill out. But again, I, I think there's so much on that security portal, um, through the DOE. Uh, you, we could analyze this for, for, for months and hours, but that, for me, the big picture was looking at, uh, some of these specifics. Our teachers were looking at specific individual questions and saying, okay, I, how am I going to get this average? How am I going to be able to find this? You know, we did well on one genre of, of question, but we didn't do well on the other. Um, and I found this, and I, and I thought, I, I always liked the big picture, uh, something that's pretty simple, um, to the point. And, um, so that was, it was a great resource.
Sometimes you might just find it's a bad question.
Yeah.
There are.
There are.
I've seen some examples of them, they're pretty.
And when you look at this, again, you know, uh, formal and informal English, uh, under, uh, under the language piece, there's only one question right there. So, you know, if, if they scored sixty-four percent off of one question, do we have, I mean, we would have to find the time for that, but should we put all of our?
It's tough to find a trend.
Time effort into that one question.
It's tough to find a trend with one question.
Exactly.
Um, the thing that stood out in math, and I know on the DOE website, it tells you what percentage is going to be asked of number cents and operations, like thirty percent, and, you know, two percent might be geometry for this coming MCAS. And the thing that jumped out on the, the graph was the, the negative nine in operations. That strand was, was pretty significant.
It was.
The others, you know, one percent or negative one, you know, and that might be the percentage of, you know, what's being looked at and what's being asked of the students, but that one was, um, operations was pretty high.
I believe in, in the math department, every, um, seven-day cycle, they're, they're going to be quizzed on specific questions catered towards those topics or, um, to, to, to see if there's, uh, improvement in there. Ethan came up with that, that idea, and I thought, you know what, this is great, because we, we need to specifically look at some of these questions and, and, uh, and see what the weaknesses are, but we also have to look at it from a, a curriculum standpoint for the entire year. Are we missing something within a certain section? And, and that's, having that discussion and that reflection is, is, is key. Um, and finding that time to be able to do that, and we are finding that time. MCAS is, is important for us to, to look at.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Enjoy the snow. Thank you.
Thank, don't thank us, thank Kim.
All right, subcommittee reports, strategic planning. Mr. Faulkner, do you want to?
Yes, we met last Wednesday, Tuesday? The days are all running together.
They are.
Had another working session, went well. We accomplished some more on the, um, core values and fine-tuning those. Got two meetings coming up. Um, we had to push those out into March because of all the other conflicts we have in the month of February. So we're, uh, going to continue that effort, and, uh, I think the next meeting, we're going to nail down most of it, if not all of it.
I think we're going to be doing pretty good. Yeah, we had to, just that one issue. But the meetings are open to the committee if anybody wants to attend. Um, we're tweaking language right now. This is what came from the subcommittees. And so anyone's more than welcome to attend.
And I'll, I'll send that out to, I've got the March schedule, just firm that up, so I'll send that out to everybody.
Um, policy, nothing on policy, regional agreement?
Uh, we have a few things, actually. I think, uh, Ms. Shaverhood just emailed all of you the rough draft or partially, uh, final draft of the survey that we said we would have for you this week. I think we would like to send this out sooner than later.
Yeah, we met with, um, the parents' organization in Millville and in Blackstone. We let them know that we're exploring dialogue and setting up a committee. And the questionnaire is, as you can see, up there.
The only one thing I do think we should change, just, I know this isn't a meeting, but, um, for the, I don't think we should ask them to put their emails on it. So it's not identifying them to their answers?
I can set it up as though, go to another page and have them.
Or just have, put our emails on there and, you know, if you're interested, please email us and we'll keep a running list.
Sure, that's not a problem. But we did, you know, meet with them on Monday night, um, and opened it up, and we are going to be, um, sending with this survey a summary of what the regional agreement actually is. Um, they requested that. And, um, then we're going to send this out and to the public, and hopefully we get a lot of responses and see where they want the regional agreement to go.
Yeah, we did get some feedback at the, um, meeting, the parent-teacher meetings that, you know, they didn't even know what the regional agreement was, so.
I think that has to be our focus.
We want to pop a summary onto there just so they know, um, the ins and outs of it in a quick overview.
When you're putting together the committee of this, a community subcommittee, are you going beyond parents?
Right now, this is just.
We haven't really, this is just, we just started a dialogue, so we haven't.
I would say this is right, this is going, this is focused to the parents of the kids in the schools. If you read the questions, it's not something community members can answer, uh, if they don't have kids in school, so. Right now, it's, it's geared towards parents.
Could you go after some of the younger kids? Because obviously they will be our students someday. Any way to get it in their hands, in essence?
Um, I think right now through, um, discussions with the.
There's really no questions that are geared towards them, so we'd have to.
I think the lowest that we could go is probably kindergarten right now for this first discussion in this first round.
And also maybe the, um, just community leaders, you know, selectmen and the thing comms and stuff like that, probably would like a, some input into at least a community group.
I think that'll.
Well, this right here, this, I mean, if you read the questions on it, we're just looking to see, to see where the parents stand on opening up talks about the regional agreement. I think it, on a subcommittee or based, community-based, we'd be looking for people like that for the input.
And just maybe, um, and I know, I, I mean, I obviously understand what you mean, but non-resident. Maybe just a little clarification in case somebody reads it and wasn't sure. And then you have a question here that's really kind of two questions, probably needs to be separated out. As a parent, I am in favor of the district forming a pre-K to grade two, early and elementary, and then a three, four, and five. and then a three, four, and five. Well, what if they're interested in one but not the other? That might be hard, just, usually you have to kind of break those questions up, but.
That sounds wonderful. We will make those changes. Anybody else?
Damn it.
Again, this is, this questionnaire, or the questionnaire that was up there, was to the people that are going to mostly be affected to this district, this regional agreement. And we just started, so I'm pretty happy that we're moving forward, and.
And we're looking forward to everyone's opinion.
That's right.
Okay.
Anything else?
I want to thank the parents' organizations for having us and actually listening to us. We appreciate it, and we appreciate the feedback.
Are we good? Legislative, Mr. Buckley?
Nothing really new to report, other than what we've covered during the budget sessions. The Chapter 70 numbers are out from the governor's budget, as well as the minimum contributions that we're looking, pouring over. And there's really no other thing to report in that, in that area at this time.
Okay. Facilities? Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley? Yes. Communication, Mr. Buckley?
We've had some interesting things go on. In fact, I think if we can get this to come up, I hope, it might come up. There it is.
Oh, look at us.
So this is, actually, it's a little bit of a delay in what's going on right now, and, yeah, so we can, it's probably a little bit disturbing when you hear your voice back. So anyway, this is us online live, from livestream.com, and thanks to Jesse for getting this done and in place. And we'll go back to our confusion here while you're showing this off.
Where is the link for that?
The link for that, we've emailed you the link, and we will put it in a very popular spot as soon as we can. If I know how to get rid of this thing, we'll be all set.
Beating with yourself.
Very impressive.
We'll go back to our confusion here while you're showing this off. The link for that, there we go.
Thank God. So, in essence, this will be available, and it will also be available after the meeting,
if you really want to go back and review history, it'll be available. And once again, we're just very happy with what Jesse's done to get this to be in place, so that's all I have.
Okay. We reported to the superintendent?
Thank you. I have, the first item would be the SIC Bank Committee. I would need the SIC Bank Committee to be formed. I believe the last time Mr. Buckley was a member, and I don't know who else was a member of the committee, we have a request that we.
The N-Me?
That's what I was.
Yeah. So that was a long time ago. And we have a request that we need to meet on, so if I could ask for the committee to form the SIC Bank, then we will be meeting shortly.
And what type of membership? Are you just looking for people from the school committee at this point?
Two members of the school committee. Two members are appointed from the Unit A, in this case, and then the superintendent acts as a non-voting chair of the SIC Bank Committee, and obviously she would vote to break any ties.
So I need two people.
And they're done, you know, in executive session. I'd be willing to continue my service.
I can.
For the sick people of the district.
Interested.
Okay.
Unless there's more than two of us, we should both.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you. And I'll be contacting you to set up a meeting with the Educators Association. Next, I would ask for the committee to make a motion and approve to dissolve the middle school building committee. As you know, we're coming up on our 10th year, this committee is still, remains on the books, and we do need to resolve it.
We finally have dispersed all the money, right? That was, I mean, still going on.
We've dispersed all the money that we need a committee for.
And we've paid all the bills?
Yes, we've paid every bill that we've been provided.
Place is almost paid off.
I guess I'd be looking for a motion to dissolve the middle school building committee.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Buckley, seconded by Mrs. Greenstein. Discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I ask that maybe a note of thanks go out to the members that are still involved or in the community? I think most still are at some level. Just let them know that their duty has been.
Discharged.
Discharged. Good point.
Next, I would be asking for a motion to accept the rubbish bid. We bid every year. This year, we sent out nine or 10 applications to bid. We received three back. One is Allied Waste. The total bid price was $13,366.80. The second was Patriot Disposal. We received their bid back at $109,255. And the third bid that we received, Waste Management of Massachusetts, $17,078.40. I would be asking the committee to accept the Allied Waste at $13,366.80.
Okay, we'll do a motion, at least for discussion purposes. Be looking for a motion to accept the rubbish bid of Allied for $13,366.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Vanaco, seconded by Mr. Buckley. Any discussion?
Ma'am.
I would be looking, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote, and I so declare it. Please note that Mr. Faulkner has recused himself from discussions.
Thank you. I would share with the committee that last year, the contract was awarded to Allied Waste, and it was for $14,766, so we have gone down in the bid.
Right.
The final item that I have would be a motion to grant a maternity and FMLA leave for Rachel Bloomstead. She is a high school teacher, and she is planning to go out in the summer, take the leave at the beginning of the school year, of 13, 14. So I would be asking the committee to vote for her to do this, her approval.
I would be looking for a motion to grant the maternity leave and FMLA leave.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Faulkner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Vanaco. Discussion?
Just what subject is that, Kim?
She teaches English and math at the high school.
At the same time, though, right?
I guess I'm unfamiliar, because she's taking, she's taking the summer, but she's going to only start her maternity leave at the beginning of the school year, and that is.
40 days, and then she's allowed 20 additional days under FMLA.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Did we already vote?
Did we vote? I thought we.
No.
Oh, okay, so.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you. I would just let the committee know that I've been in contact with the towns regarding the upcoming snow. We do have a plan in place, if it gets to a certain level at the complex roof, how it's going to be removed, as well as if we get a large amount of snow on the high school cafeteria roof, we have a plan that we will get up there and have it removed. Hopefully, not with shovels, but with backpack blowers. So it ought to be interesting.
Be light and fluffy this time?
That's what they're saying to us.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
Just don't let them watch the snow blowers up there, that's all.
Oh, goodness.
Public forum? Okay, no public forum? Committee forum?
Anyone? Do you want to?
Committee forum, Mr. Tringali?
I'm not sure how school-related this is, but I'll mention it anyway. I'd like to congratulate, Lisa Cheever is the new librarian in the Blackstone Public Library. She actually moved over from Millville. She was the Millville librarian, but extremely part-time over there, so she's up to a full-time job there. And actually, they're having a meeting of the trustees next Monday, the February 11th, and I will be attending that meeting. And one of the things I want to talk to them about is looking at the policy that they have right now of not allowing Millville residents to borrow materials from the Blackstone Library. Because, again, the, people that don't know, that's because the Millville Library is a decertified library by the state, and the state recommends, it's not a law, but they recommend, that the Blackstone Library does not allow people of decertified towns to borrow materials. I just want to have them reconsider their proposal. So I'll be attending on Monday, if anyone wants to come.
Can you ask a question, like, about, how does that, like, impact the fact that, you know, the children of the school district?
That's exactly the angle I'm going to take.
Okay.
Exactly. Because, actually, I was looking on their website, their mission statement, the second item on there is to support the schools, and support the schools and the communities. That's the second item listed on their mission statement, so.
What time is that?
That's in Blackstone. Oh, that's Monday at 7:00 in the meeting room at the library, so, again, anyone that's available, any families, kids, et cetera. I think the more, the better. That's all.
Mrs. Vanaco?
I'll just wish everyone well through the storm. Hope everyone stays in, enjoys the warmth of their homes.
I just wanted to mention, after our special meeting where we voted to move from JV to varsity football, we talk about sports and extracurriculars helping to create kids with character. And I think that was exemplified after that vote. There were about 12 to 15 kids here that night, excuse me. And after the meeting adjourned, every one of those kids came up and shook my hand, I think your hand as well.
Oh, yeah.
And thanked us all for doing that, so I just think it's a great example of.
Seem like more kids out there, when you say 12 to 15.
There was at least 12, 15, maybe more, and a couple of seniors, too. So I just want to give credit where credit's due to those kids who came here, showed their support, and then showed their appreciation, so. Good job, guys.
I appreciate that as well. I mean, after it was all done and voted, a lot of times, people just walked out the door, and it was, the kids most, I mean, the adults, too, thanked us, too, but I was very impressed by that, coming up and thanking us personally and shaking our hands.
And some of them had pretty strong grips, too.
Yeah, yeah.
That was good. That was impressive.
Mrs. Robinson, anything from you tonight? Mrs. Robinson, anything from you?
Oh, no.
Committee forum? Okay. Mrs. Greenstein?
No, nothing for me.
Mr. Buckley?
On Tuesday last, myself, the superintendent, and District Council Gould attended the Blackstone Board of Selectment meeting, and we went over there, with them, the terms and issues, addressed any of the issues that they may have had, or questions they had regarding the roof projects that are, both towns, I guess, are scheduled to go to town meeting on March the 11th. So we were in attendance, I think we answered any of their concerns, and one of their mounting concerns, obviously, was whether or not Blacks, whether or not Millville was, what Millville was going to do, and I think that's been settled, but from what I understand, is that they've also scheduled it for the 11th of March. Superintendent can probably also get everyone a copy of the amortization schedule, so you get an idea of what the cost is going to be to each town. The region distribution is, you know, 70% will be borne by the town of Blackstone, and 30%, about 30% will be borne by the town of Millville, and then Blackstone will have the other two projects, the AFM and the John F. Kennedy School. It was, it's interesting to note that Blackstone was tossing around the idea of perhaps financing this through some of their stabilization funds, rather than borrowing the money. However, there really isn't a vehicle, as they adopted the warrant to go forward in the 11th, there won't be a funding mechanism that way, so it will be a expected situation where the money will be borrowed or bonded. The district will receive 57-plus percent reimbursement from SBAB, the Mass Building, School Building Authority, and the towns are responsible for the balance, about 43%. So that works out to, Kim can share with you the amortization schedules, like I said, so you can answer any questions that folks have. You know, thanks to the superintendent and Attorney Gould for their hard work in getting it to this level, and I guess we'll probably have to kind of put our heads, collective heads together to see who's going to cover which town meetings, seeing that we probably all can't be in the same place at the same, two places at the same time. Well, I think, and Superintendent, you have the potential.
She's pretty good.
You can scape it in.
There you go.
Anything else, Mr. Buckley?
Yeah, there probably also will be a couple of other sessions, probably the finance committees, I would expect, as they figure out how they're going to fund this. And we have sent to the communities the appropriate language, so, you know, if they decide if they're going to exclude the capital or the debt from Proposition 2 and 1/2, the language has been provided by Harold, or if they decide not to, the language is also there, so. Thank you.
I just wanted to bring up, we have a couple of blood drives coming up at the high school on February 15th, and that is open to the public. And I think it's going to be held in the, is it the?
The gym, maybe?
The gym? So the public can access, are they going to just come in through the gym?
Yes.
And just to mention, BVT is also holding one on February 26th, and I believe that one is going, I'm not sure of the time.
Three to eight.
I think it's three to eight. I knew it was going well into the evening. And that is actually to benefit our, Mr. Eldridge on the committee. And so anybody can make it to either one of those, we would appreciate the community support. And that is it for me.
Is there a time in the high school one?
I think it was.
3:07, 3:00, I thought it was like noon to 6:00.
I thought it was 12 to 5.
I have the posters.
When you go by the high school, just slow down a little bit and take a quick glance.
All right.
I believe the original posting was 12 to 5, and then I saw 12 to 6, so I thought maybe they expanded it an hour.
3 to 4, good.
So if anybody can go down and get some blood. I think we are, that is it for the agenda tonight. I do not believe we need the executive session that was on our agenda, so we will not be entering into executive session. So I would just be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Buckley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Vanaco. And all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And ayes? It's a vote.
Thank you very much.